The be witching hour has struck. Satellite time says that it is 7:00 PM, so I'll officially call the September 14th work session at the Town Board to order. We'll let the minutes reflect that we've got three of the five Town Board members. One should be here shortly. The other one is out on business and will not be joining us. Mr. Moore will not be joining us this evening. Before we get into the agenda, if you're here for the Penfield Fire District update of the proposed 5K race, that will not be discussed this evening. That in fact will be discussed on the 28th. We had a request here within the last 24 hours to have that pulled off the agenda due to a conflict of some meetings. So that item will not be discussed this evening. The second item that will not be discussed in any great detail is a review of the informal discussion for a pet hotel at 125 Panorama Creek Drive. And when we get to that item, there's a letter from the applicant that I'll read into the record, and I'm sure the board members may have some comments, but if you're here for that, that's not going to be any in-depth discussion either. So with that, we'll let the minutes also reflect that we have a number of staff members with us, as well as a number of folks in and around the audience.
Supervisor, hi, I'm Don Young. I'm here on behalf of the Citizens Committee opposing the hotel, the doggy hotel.
Uh-huh.
I'm wondering if-
Hope your meter's not running.
Well-
For your sake.
Yeah, I'm hoping you may have an extra letter I could take with me.
I don't have-
I actually do have one.
You do, you can take that, and you've got that.
Thank you, Superintendent.
And with that, you're welcome to stay. Your meter's already running, you're welcome to stay for about 15 or 20 minutes, and you can hear any further discussion. One will be the letter read into the record, and any comments the board might have. So with that-
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have the August 24th, 2016 minutes before us, would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I will move for approval of those minutes. I will second.
Seconding. Any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, then the minutes will stand approved, as written. Thank you, Lisa. Monthly reports, we have most of our monthly reports in. We have a couple of departments where they are out on vacation. One, Finance, they're back tomorrow, and I'm sure we'll have that. And Personnel, Recreation, Building, and Fire Marshal. So we'll make sure that those get in by week's end. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have one guest, again, if you're here for a Penfield Fire District update of the proposed 5K race, that will not be discussed. We'll move on to our second guest, which is Jess Sudal from the Passerol Group, and we're going to be talking about discussion revisions to the condominiums, two apartments at South Point Cove. And with that, Jess, the floor is yours, sir.
Sure, well, thank you very much. I'm here representing Morgan Management and Splatter Construction for the South Point Cove apartment project, which has since been rebranded Waters Edge. Just to give everybody a little bit of an update, if you may or may not heard, the leasing out there has been going better than they ever could have expected. They have almost 200 leases signed. They're about to turn over their fifth building, which is almost fully leased and hasn't even gotten a certificate of occupancy yet. So everything's going very well out there. I'm here this evening specifically to address what has been historically referred to as Building 10. There's a little key map behind you. I know it's tough to see because it's kind of small, but Building 10 is the building that's out there, kind of on the point, out towards where the Eagle's Nest was, if you recall. That building was originally approved when we went through the secret process as being a 39-unit apartment building. Approximately a year after that process was completed, I came back before this board with a request to make some changes to convert it to condominiums. And at that time, we were proposing 24 for-sale condominiums, and we also made some changes to the site plan, including the addition of this pool area here, and also these covered garages here and here, which were all subsequently reviewed and authorized by this board. Since then, the applicants and developers have decided to change it back to rental apartments. And the reason for that is really because, A, when they started to attempt to pre-sell the condominiums, there really wasn't the market there that they were hoping for. They needed to pre-sell a certain percentage in order to move forward with the condominium designation and process with the state. They were, you know, only really able to get two or three commitments, and, you know, that combined with the fact that the apartments were leasing so well, they figured that it would just make a lot more sense to keep that as rental as originally approved. Now with that said, the rental units are going to be a much higher-end unit than the rest of the project. The building will actually still be constructed identically, almost, to the way that the condos were designed. They'll have all the same amenities, they'll have their own pool, we're going to keep the garages, we're going to have all the additional storage underneath the building within the garage area. The only difference, there's two differences between 24 condos, now we're going to 26 apartments, still well below the 39 that were originally approved in there. And basically, all we're doing is we're taking one really big three-bedroom previously designed as a condo, that was huge, it was like almost 3,000 square feet, and we're dividing that into a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. And a lot of that, again, has been dictated by the market conditions that we're seeing in the other buildings. There's another difference, the other difference. So we're going from 24 to 26.
What's the difference in them? What's your, the price for the apartments up there to the fancy former condo ones?
It's about 20% higher.
20% higher?
So if those were leasing for, you know, 1,400, 1,500, these would be, you know, closer to 1,800, depending on if you're going with a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. But other than that, it's more or less, you know, yeah, oh yeah, the other difference was it's going to be for rent and not for sale.
How about the facade? Is there going to be any difference?
Nope, the elevation will be exactly the same, all materials will be exactly the same. If you recall, I unfortunately don't have the colored versions, but I do have the building elevation, which was previously approved. And if you recall, the facades and the stonework, which is tough to see, some of this additional detail, which kind of gave this building its own identity, and these things down here is architectural elements, will all remain intact as part of the apartment. So it's really going to be constructed exactly the same as, you know, was previously approved. It's just-
Internally, it's going to appear different, and then obviously the sale will be rental version?
Yeah, even internally, it's not going to be much different, other than the conversion of that, those two three-bedrooms to two ones and two twos.
So you're not, you're not looking to plop an additional apartment building that looks exactly the same?
No, no, it's-
I think that was some-
It's still going to, yeah, no, we're not taking one of the buildings we're already building and just moving it out there. This will, well, for starters, we've actually, this building's a little bigger.
It's already even started.
Yeah, we've already got a foundation in place. And it's not that we started building and then stopped because, you know, we're not confident in demand. We do have the timetable, timeframes that are associated with Eagle and the DEC permit. So we can only work on it, you know, kind of four months, then we have to wait and forth. But we feel that, you know, once the breeding season ends, which is in the very near future here, we'll be able to, actually, right about now, we're hoping to be able to get that shell up pretty quickly. And then once we have the shell, you know, we're able to work inside this way to Eagle.
Jess, just for the record, of the 26 units, can you break them down for the one, two bedrooms? How many are you going to have of each?
Not off the top of my head, it would be, you know, that doesn't have the condo information on it, does it?
It actually had 24 units.
Just, it just gives-
Yeah, if you hand me that, I can-
It just gives the number of units, it doesn't give the break.
Actually, it had six bedrooms, six, two bedrooms, 18 three-bedrooms.
Right, so there'll be 16 three-bedrooms now, and then two more, two bedrooms and two more one-bedrooms than what that has. Yeah, my apologies for not bringing that with me.
How about that pool? Are you going to, is it going to be allowed, the other apartments to use the pool? Have a pass?
No, the other apartments are also going to use the pool at the clubhouse, which is actually built and operational now. And this pool will strictly be for this particular building, which is the same way it was presented for the, when it was a condo.
So it's still a special amenity for those people?
Yes.
For me and Mark?
That's correct.
Okay. Private pool and a covered carports?
Yeah, you're going to get, everyone's going to get one parking space underneath the building, and additionally, which is unique to the, this building 10, they'll also get a carport out front. If you remember, when we got those approved, they're actually one of the more decorative carports that we've ever done, and we've actually showed those to other communities, and it's gone pretty well.
I was asked by someone, kind of the breakdown of, you know, who gets a slip on the marina, who gets a membership at the club, like, how is that broken down? Do you know?
Actually, there's really no direct affiliation between the marina and the apartments. By renting apartment, it does not necessarily entitle you to a boat slip. The boat, the marina does have reserved spaces as part of the approval for local developments. That was kind of big during the approval process, so that, you know, we weren't creating a demand elsewhere. So they have, you know, a handful of slips aside for local developments, which go quickly with these apartments, but just renting a unit does not necessarily entitle one, entitle you to one.
So the pool, even though it's kind of part of the marina, it's separate from-
Yeah, the actual, the pool, there's, there's actually three pools. There's one pool for this building, then there's a clubhouse, and the clubhouse that has the lighthouse with its own pool, that's for the apartments. And then down at the marina, they actually have another pool, and that pool and that whole first floor is all for marina members.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay. Board, other questions or comments on this?
No, I'm fine with this as proposed. We just need some explanation, you know?
Yeah, no, certainly, happy to. Yeah, sorry, couldn't make it last time, I had a conflict in another community.
And this is related, but not related to the buildings? I also had an inquiry from the resident as to when the walking pass and overlook, like, when is that all going to be completed? The public access?
There's actually public access in there now. If you drive through it, there's actually the little signs that direct public access over towards the pool area, where there's an overlook area.
Is it completed? Because there was, as expressed to me, it seemed there was not, there was something-
It's not, oh, shoot, I have an overall map. The part where it comes-
I thought it was that it wasn't probably completed yet.
It's completed as far as it can be, which, so you can come up from the marina, it's all public access. Then you can take a left and go out to the clubhouse area, which is public access. But the one that actually continues all the way through the project will be completed once those last three buildings on the end are.
That's right on the road, right?
That's how I answered it.
Well, it's both. It's, we have the sidewalk on the road, which is done, but then we also have internal public access, which takes you all the way through the property, which will be extended as the project's completed.
Heading towards Liberty Street.
And then it takes you up to that sidewalk area, and then, and then part of the-
Yeah, it takes you around Building 9, and then up in there.
Okay, great, thank you. That's helpful.
Okay. Board, other questions or comments for Jess?
Okay.
Staff, any additional comments that you believe should be added to the record that hasn't been added to the record thus far?
No, just a question. They have started work on the facade of this building, they have a very tight timeframe to work within, have they started yet?
The facade?
What they're going to be doing to finish up before the end of the year?
No, they haven't completed framing on that building yet.
Yeah.
You mean because of the eagle?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought, if memory serves me correct-
They have the foundation decked in.
Yeah, the foundation is there, but they couldn't start until something, I mean, we're getting close.
September through December, yeah.
Yeah. Exactly, there's no drop dead deadline, it's technically once the baby eaglets have gone off on their own. So they actually have a biologist, one of the biologists that worked on the impact statement for the marina, is kind of letting them know when that occurs.
Okay.
So it was last time, the foundations, it turns out, take like almost two months to build. So last time they got the foundation and deck in, and then this time they're going to do all the framing.
And that eaglet hatching stems from the DEC's oversight, right? I mean, DEC also is locked?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, DEC still monitors both projects, and, you know, everything's actually gone very smoothly, considering, you know, how Baylor project is, it's gone very well.
And eagle, eagle has quite an ego now, from all the power it's-
I'll tell you what, he's not been scared off.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing more from staff, nothing more from the board, then we will bring this item to a closure, and appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, absolutely.
And thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
All right. Very good, very good. That will, that will take us now to our action items that are under law on finance. And the first item that was on the agenda as published was the pet hotel at 125, excuse me, 125 Panorama Creek Drive. And the town did receive a letter from the attorney, Woods-Oveit, Jerry Goldman, that essentially reads as follows. Dear Board Members, this office represents Green Valley K-9 LLC, who has proposed a dog hotel and spa for the former Camp Akamal property. After careful review of the site, the town code, neighborhood concerns, our client has decided not to pursue the dog hotel and spa at this location. On behalf of our client, we appreciate the town's consideration of this proposed project, and request that all further consideration of this proposal be terminated. Thank you very much for your courtesy, signed by Jerry A. Goldman, Woods-Oveit-Gilman. I'd also like to add to the record, as I indicated earlier, Andy Moore is traveling for business. He sent a short email and asked that I make this part of the record. I apologize for not being able to make the work session meeting tonight, as my work responsibilities require me to be out of town. It is my opinion that a pet hotel at this location is not an appropriate use of the property. I believe that the proposed use would have a negative impact on the Allen's Creek residential community. Therefore, I'd like to state for the record that I do not support this pet hotel proposal, and encourage my colleagues to vote against it. Thank you very much, Andy Moore, Town Board Member. And with that, I would just ask, Board, any additional comments that any of you may have on the, on this particular matter?
Well, Mr. Supervisor, I know you're working with Mr. Goldman also to try and facilitate demolition of the buildings that are sitting on site, and I know you're working with him to get that resolved. We currently have, they have them in court, it's been adjourned until November in an effort to let Mr. Goldman work through the process of getting what he needs to get done to start demolition of those buildings. So that should happen, I would think, in the next couple of weeks to months, so.
And I would certainly concur with what Councilman Moore has said. I have stated all along that not only do I think this was not an appropriate fit or use of this property, given primarily the neighbors' concerns and effects on the beautiful neighborhood there, but also as we, as the project was revised or proposed and revised, I also did not see it as an appropriate place for dogs to be housed, kennelled, given the changes they were making to the plan to try to accommodate the neighbors. So I am pleased that Mr. Goldman, who did an admirable job for his client in really working this up and presenting, you know, arguments we had to seriously consider, but at the end of the day, they did not sway me from what my opinion has been all along, that I was not in favor of this as well.
Yeah, it was in an area that wasn't zoned for what they were looking for to begin with. And then we had the neighbors coming out, and they were very unhappy about it. Those two things in itself, but also, you know, the pet hotel, I'm a dog owner, I think it'd be a great thing to have, but in an appropriate use, that's zoned properly, certainly we could look at it, but that wasn't the place to have such a-
Especially once they said there would be no, no dogs would be allowed outside anymore.
Yeah.
You know, that kind of, it didn't get to where the project was trying to be wedged in to approval, that was not going to be had, so.
Okay. All right, very good. We'll move on to item number two. Item number two is the garage with less setback than permitted at 1750 Penfield Road. And we held a public hearing last Wednesday, and indicated to the applicant and those that were at the meeting that the next opportunity for discussion would be this evening. And with that, Mr. Costello, any additional comments or feedback for the board as part of this project?
No, I'm in the process of preparing a draft resolution for you all to review. Again, just some of the highlights, there's currently a 36 by 22 square foot garage on site, houses three stalls. She's looking to do 22 by 50 to provide seven, or four more stalls to get a total of seven. The building is coming closer to the house and not away from the house, which will provide some more buffer from the adjacent property owners. She indicated that she is going to live on-site as a resident to oversee the occurrences in the site, to make sure it maintains a residential character. I've got some already in that effect. I know that the adjacent property owner has some concerns early on, but then listened to the application and is aware of the modifications that she made to try and buffer the site better. And I spoke to him today, and he's indicated that he's satisfied with the effort, so those are the highlights at this point.
And that the cars are all owned?
Cars will be removed from the site, and I assume you're going to be doing that probably soon.
Right, yeah, I will. It's going to be like within the next couple of weeks, um, yeah, because I have to anyway.
You need to do that more to build the building.
Yeah, that's where the garage is going to go. Yeah, I have to get those out of there. So in the next two to three weeks, those are 100% going to be gone and off the site, so.
And then I also indicated that there are two cars on-site, two vehicles on-site that she's going to keep there and move them into the building after it's constructed, and then not have any other vehicles in the exterior.
And the stores will be vehicles that you own, not-
That is correct. Only personal family property, nothing commercial or non-family whatsoever.
No auto repair?
That is correct.
Like the biggies, you know?
Yeah.
You did an excellent presentation, you learned very well.
Thanks. Are you talking in public? I get so nervous and yeah.
No, I was just going to say the same thing that Linda just said. I mean, you made it very clear what the use of this garage will be, and I also want to commend your, you know, due diligence and your presentation. I mean, you made it that much easier for us and for the neighbors to understand, and I think really appreciate what you're trying to do, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm full support of this, yeah.
And you didn't go ahead and do anything and then come back and go, ooh, I need permission to do this.
No. No, I'm not going to do that.
So you've done a lot of work for your father, so that's very commendable.
Thank you.
Do you plan on starting construction this year, or are you going to wait until spring?
As soon as we can get the permanent place, I have the contractor that I want to use lined up, and I'm hoping he can cut ground like as soon as that permit is set to go, so.
The building, I'm sorry, and then one last question. The building itself as design is basically a one-story building, but it has a pitched roof, but there's no secondary storage area to the roof?
There is a small secondary storage area, just underneath the pitched roof. It doesn't go the whole width of it, and you can't put anything up there, like vehicles. It'd be like for just boxes, like if you had a couple rubber-made totes or something, you could put up there, but no, there's not like any major secondary storage up there.
Okay. Very nice.
All right, Board, other questions, comments? Staff, any additional comments, input, feedback that hasn't been added to the record that we believe should be part of the record?
No, I think that was a question I had regarding the pitch on the roof, to make sure that it just-
Okay. Great. So you'll prepare a draft resolution for the board, and that resolution will be proposed for the September 21st Town Board meeting?
Very good.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll shift gears now, moving on, action items for Public Works. We have an RFP for surveyor's discussion and award, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I set this out the other day for the board to look at. I do have the actual quotes that I got back from the, from the surveyors at the board to like to look at those. But looking to do something similar to what we already do, we have landscape consultant on contract, we have a consultant on contract for architecture, and also for C-gras needed. We do have a specific budget line for surveying, but every time we want to go and have a project surveyed, we've got to go up for three quotes, get the bids back, come back to the, you know, to this board, get authorized, and go out. So just looking at something we'd like to renew annually, as we do at the organizational meeting the first of the year, we sent out an RFP, I believe to five or six survey firms. We got three back. We've broken it down to items, whether it's prevailing wage or a non-pervailing wage rate. And there is some information, if they're doing boundary survey, it has a non-pervailing wage rate. Some mapping, other parts is, when they're doing construction stakeout or topo, is prevailing wage rate amount. So we broke that down into two, so I kind of highlighted in green, you know, the one-man crew versus two men, so you can kind of see that. So I'm here tonight to, you know, obviously answer any questions the board has. I was hoping that the board would be willing to authorize two survey firms, as people are busy back and forth. This Summerhaze group has only two-man crew, but is low in the two-man operation. VME was the low bidder on the one-man operation. So as they have timing and availability, we could contact them, use their quoted amount, and then we have a budget line that we will go against, and obviously, you know, we're held by that budget line, so we wouldn't exceed it.
We did that with the property maintenance.
I'd say we have a landscape consultant every year that we, we go out for bids annually and come back with, and then if the board was comfortable authorizing them, but just kind of under professional services, you know, we're allowed to do that, but it just makes it easier for us if we have something, it's a quicker turnaround than, you know, if the highway crews waiting for us to stake out a property line or something, then, you know, it could be up to a month or more turnaround to get something back and get that work accomplished.
And this is, falls within the budget?
Yes, we do have a dedicated survey line in our engineering budget.
This was through some discussion with Mark and myself, and then also with the finance office, thought this was a good way to do it. And then now what will happen on an annual basis, no, no, no different than what we do for property maintenance, no different than what we do for architectural, no different than what we do for a couple of others, that we will, we'll have that and we'll award it as part of our organizational meeting. And that way, instead of going out, as Mark said, each time, this would be an opportunity for the year, so.
Yep, makes sense.
All right.
And just reviewed as appropriate to ensure that we're still getting the best?
Yeah, Supervisor, we want to sit down and look and go back out for quotes and make sure that, you know, we sharpen our pencils and we get the best price for them, for the residents.
And make that part of, again, make that part of our organizational meeting and resolutions, so, okay. Mark, you will move forward with the resolution for the 21st?
Yep.
And that will carry us through year-end, and then we'll get, you know, a new cycle as we hit 2017.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The second item is a request for a circular driveway at 792 Liberty Street, and Mr. Valentine, you seem to be the man of the hour, so we'll let you continue right through. Welcome to the property owners.
Received this information through the EPW department. Residents of 792 contacted them, inquiring about having a circular driveway on their property. Our code allows a circular driveway after a corner lot. It also requires if you're in larger lot than what is standard. Their lot is larger than what our standard is, you know, as far as the minimum. So the first page just kind of shows, I think they're showing there's other circular driveways on Liberty Street, just, just so they're kind of similar. And then they sketched in where they're looking to have the driveway in there. And I went out just this afternoon, took a few photos, I have a couple of copies I can send around, looking at it. But the driveway originally was on the west side, the left side of the road, and they still have the curb cut there from it, would you say, three or four years ago?
Three.
Three years ago, moved it to the east side of the property, so they have a new driveway there. They're looking to just kind of loop it in back and forth. Issues with, you know, concerns backing out on Liberty Street, you know, this speeds the volume, you know, coming up down the road. Immediate neighbor has a loose driveway on the property as well. I'll let you discuss if anything I missed, or any things that you'd like to add to the board.
Traffic has increased on Liberty Street, particularly with the construction on 441. People like to kind of cut through there and miss the light in the middle of town. And the driveway that we moved from the west side to the east side is a beautiful driveway. He designed it, but it goes like that, and so he can back out and I can back out, nobody else can back out of that driveway. And with the increased traffic, it just makes it a little bit more dangerous there.
Were any trees need to be removed?
Tree fell down. Part of, part of how we decided, we had a 200-year-old sugar maple tree that in February, half of it fell down, and I had to have it removed, unfortunately, because it kind of framed my house.
Didn't fall on your house or anything?
Didn't fall on your house or anything?
Part of it did.
Part of it did.
Yeah, but not, not too bad. We were pretty lucky.
Yeah, kind of grazed the front of the house.
So, I missed my tree, but no, there are no trees there. That, that tree took down two other ones too, so, no.
I heard and said there isn't existing curb cuts. They don't actually need to get a...
Yeah, I think it's a reasonable request.
Curb cut for the DPW.
Absolutely, I agree with you. Yeah. Also, the circular driveway would put us up to the front door. The new driveway is a side door and the back door, but, so that would be nice.
Good. I think it sounds good.
Very good. Okay, board, all good?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Staff, anything additional that the board should be aware of that to make it part of the record that we haven't already seen or discussed this evening? Anything else from the owner at all? Okay, all right. Thank you very much for your time and good luck with the, luck with the project and God there wasn't any major damage to the house.
No, thank you very much. We feel lucky. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, that will take us to sidewalk waiver at 1445 Jackson Road. And so, it's been a while. This, this item has been on the agenda here for probably about six or more months. And so, Mark, if you would just take maybe a moment, just refresh everybody before we get into the discussion, if you would please.
Sure. So, just north of where we are, 1445 Jackson Road is a single-family home lot. This came before the board first sidewalk waiver. We were looking at adjusting our policy. We'd made some, some proposals to that. I'm finalizing that and we'll have that back before the board shortly. Knew that, you know, doing a summer public hearing wouldn't have been optimal for the residents anyway, so we're continuing to roll that out. So, I believe this application will still be operating under our existing conditions. They have the house up. They're actually asking for their CVO now, so that's why, with the impetus to put it back on tonight's agenda. I did reach out to the homeowners to come. I just got a note back this evening that they have a sick child and then the other parent is going to information night at school or there's some curriculum night, excuse me. So, they were, of course, they were...
Is there a route around?
You may have passed one of them, but they were curriculum night for that, so they won't be here. Obviously, they're asking for the waiver, they're more than willing to grant the easement, they're more than willing to, you know, to pay the, you know, the typical waiver fee for that. Rob, I did bring the, the map that I know you like of showing our easements in areas. They are located right here on the map. Our closest sidewalk is at Penfield Center Road, we're about 0.6 miles from the end of that sidewalk to where their properties, excuse me, there is a small piece of D'Angelo next door.
D'Angelo put a small piece on either side of his...
He's got a little, a little at his entrance. I know most recently we were talking about a sidewalk up at this end for the group home just at Jackson and State.
Very old, very old.
Yep, we're, you know, we gave them a waiver up there and looking ahead at our projections for other areas or areas in town, I know the board's been focused on 250, doing pieces by the YMCA, going along 250 and Empire Boulevard, and then most recently been working on Atlantic Avenue. So, Jackson Road is pretty far off on our, on our expansion list for the time being.
Yeah, one day if there's subdivisions to come in, if you want to get those people into our park, we want sidewalks.
And I think when we originally started working, looking at this application, that's when we were looking at the Rubino property and Gary Smith property and there was, I think at that time seemed to be a lot more potential or a lot more drive for development in that, that quarter. So, we did talk again, about it again at PRC this morning, given the, kind of the current state of things and that those developments have kind of fallen off, there's not the drive for development or walk up there. PRC recommended the waiver, but obviously it's up to this board to...
I agree with that. Makes sense.
And then our, our goal still, Mark, is, is that to put together a, an updated or modified sidewalk policy that we'll be bringing in and ultimately we'll have to go through a public hearing for that. But obviously, we can't hold people to that potential new standard without having that in place. So, we'll get the easement, we'll get the $500 consistent with what we have had in the past. And then if you've got a timeline, when you'd like to see that sidewalk policy come in for public hearing?
I'd say I'll, I'll try to wrap that up by the end of this month, so probably in October, public hearing for the board.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I would just say that we move expeditiously on that because I'd hate to see us confronted with similar circumstances because I'm not thrilled about approving this. I do think that that area, considering where it's located and what sidewalks are existing now, I think it should have a sidewalk on the frontage. However, as Tony mentioned, it's been held for a very long time as we've been trying to move through this and I don't think we probably move as quickly as we should have to, you know, come up with some resolution, but at the same time, it did ask for the waiver under the current standard. So, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward with the waiver in this case, but I just say that we try to move expeditiously because I'd hate to have the next homeowner come in and now here we are with a new policy coming down the board, you know, coming down the pike in two months and we've just missed X number of dollars and Y number of properties. So, with that said, I mean, I would be in favor of, of this waiver.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get moving on.
All right, other questions, board? Anything else, staff, staff end? Okay, great. We'll take care of that and again, we'll get that easement and the waiver dollars associated with that. Okay, the next item is a request for sidewalk waiver at Barclay Park subdivision. And Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Again, this is another one that's been held in advance for a period of time for different reasons. What occurred was, and the reason it did take so long is because we were still going back and wrestling with what was required in Abington section one. And once I realized what was required that had not been installed, we had to work with the developer to make sure that that was part of the package as related to what you're dealing with now with Barclay Park. I'm going to refer to this as the Rob Quinn picking path. It was kind of funny that you did bring it up at that meeting last time because we had talked about that that very morning about doing something different than a sidewalk just running along that one stretch. So, BME went back, they designed a hiking trail path. You can't see it here, but it does follow the contours of the properties. There are some berms along the east side of the trail so that you really can't see it from the street, but it does incorporate both a little pond area to the north of Berkeley, Birch Lane, and then it also comes into throughout their property, two property that we now own that was deeded to us as part of the approval process for Abington. You can see in yellow, that would be all privately maintained. It's going to be a stone dust path. The homeowners association would maintain everything even through our property. You note the orange portion is an easement that we would require, that we would grant the association and work within our property. At some point in time, if they did not take care of that, then obviously it would just go away and we would then take back the property. If the property had to be utilized for some reason for road improvements or whatever the case may be, the easement would then be extinguished and we would do what we need to do and then redesign the easement to accommodate whatever, ever improvement takes place. And as part of that, we have also required that they do install concrete sidewalks along the frontage of the one property at 4 Colton Court, because that should have been installed in the first place.
Right.
So, it actually did turn out to be a really nice project and it is going to provide for us not to have to do some maintenance, the association will take care of that. And there is now access to and from both projects.
Yeah, Jim, I want to thank you for your efforts on this and Mark and Rudy as well because I, when I saw this come in today, I took a look at it, I mean, this basically is exactly what I was envisioning when we talked about how you could keep it internal and not have sidewalk on the frontage of 250, so I think this makes sense. Just one, one other question, is there going to be some form of crosswalk or delineation there at the edge of the street?
We could have, yes, that's a good point. We could have a crosswalk installed here as part of the process that you'll note that they are installing a small crosswalk on Maya Drive as it crosses that way so we can do it both, both points, yeah.
Just as people are pulling it out?
Yep.
They are aware that there could be someone crossing. All right, thanks.
Yeah. Good. Everybody comfortable with that? All right, I think that was a good effort of going back and reworking that, so thank you to Rob kind of teeing that up for us.
And responding to neighbors' concerns all along, I think was commendable too.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. The next item is Jeff Luce, 1357 Marchiner Road out District User, out District Suri. And if you recall, this has been on the agenda for a while as well. This piece of property is on the east side of 250 opposite Abington and Barclay. And one of the, one of the things that they were interested in doing was putting in a small grinder pump and taking two or three lots and pumping them from Marchiner Road across the street and then tying those into existing sewers. And I know that we had teed that up with a ton of Webster because there is in fact some, you know, concerns and issues about overall capacity. And I guess before I get myself too deep into weeds, I'll turn it over to the, to the experts and let them take the story the rest of the way.
Yeah, I think we're just bringing this back to, maybe temporarily close this one out. We've reached out to Webster and original concern we were working with, especially while we're going through Abington, most recently Barclay, and then even looking at Vandal is making sure there's sewer capacity in Webster. It flows into their system. There is a visca bypass, but the bypass, just as I said, is a steep road that it goes through. That was our original concern. I think that's not the issue. Now, Webster as a whole is looking at their treatment plant overall, so they may have some capacity issues with their, their treatment plant in general. Just knowing that it's going to be a long or a longer time for them to evaluate that and come back with a response to it, you know, rather than leaving this, this homeowner kind of out there hanging, obviously they can come back at any time once, when and if we get feedback from Webster saying, "Yeah, we have capacity," you know, they could, you know, make a new application, come back in for district formation, but just kind of wanted to close it out at least for the short term until we get information from Webster, just so it's not a held item. It's not something that this board is, is holding up, it's something, information we're looking for from Webster. So, just kind of close that out.
So, the action item this evening is to just close it out and remove it from the...
Just, just take it off the agenda, but just to, to wrap it up that it was a held item, just to let the board know why we were going to be taking it off the agenda, you know, and see when we get information back from Webster, residents more than willing or more than welcome to make an application back.
So, it's going to be in the held item?
We're just going to take it off and then take it...
We'll notify Mr. Luce.
I was just going to ask if you have any contact with him?
Yeah, he's been emailing me back and forth about what have we heard from Webster? He knows that's what we're waiting for.
Got it.
So, we'll tell him the board's just taking it off their list for now. There's no denial, there's no approval. It's just removed from the agenda and he can come back at any point in the future.
Okay. Everybody's good with that? All right, very good. Thank you, Mark. And then MRB mixed-use contract and...
Each packet, there's one. This is something we've been waiting for, for a little while, is to get the traffic information. So, as we're moving through the secret process for the mixed-use piece, originally we had a contract with MRB to do the long form, so it's a basic environmental analysis of it. But as we've gotten into the project, it made more sense to...
Take the red one and give it to the others. All right, thank you.
It made more sense to broaden the scope and as we get into it, realize we're going to have to do a generic environmental impact statement. So, obviously, you know, there's more involved with that. And I say, I think my apologies to the board, I'd sent off, actually it was McFarland Johnson's quote, which was much higher than what SRF had. So, we've been waiting for the traffic part of it, worked with a couple of different traffic engineers, a couple of different quotes, but basically we have a quote from MRB for $18,500 to complete the secret portion of it and SRF at $6,650 to complete the traffic study part of it. So, that would be all-inclusive of what they have to do to bring us to the end of this secret process, do the scope and everything else. So, that's a total of just over $25,000 for that. We do have it in the budget. We had it in the original scope of the budget. We have $38,000 remaining for this piece, so we're under that amount that we originally had scoped out for, but just making sure, and obviously, the board's going to move ahead with the various contracts to keep that project moving ahead.
Under budget is good?
Yeah. I think we've totally paid out the consultant.
The consultant is paid out, so that is done, so...
We'll let receive those people from Georgia again? That's all done?
We'll let receive them again. We're in an obligation to pay them.
We're not coming back off of the presentation.
They completed their obligation to take it, to turn the manual over. We've still been in touch with them, but, so the only piece left, we have the secret piece and obviously, you know, staff working through the approval and everything else.
Mark, when, I was just going to ask, when, when SRF does their study, how, how much information can they pull or how effective is it to work closely with the state? Because the state must have done some extensive studies with the 250 traffic light there out in front of the Y.
SRF is actually the group that did that.
There you go. Okay, so I was just going to say, I mean, I hope that together we're not rebuilding...
And that's, and that's why we're working with them. They, they did the 250, they did not do the 250 corridor study. I'm sorry, but they did the YMCA study.
It's long enough to go though.
They did the YMCA study most recently, so they have the data counts. We had them look at the Atlantic 250 intersection. We had them look at, obviously, where the YMCA is, Sweet's Corners Drive, and then Wayland and 250. So, they've done the most recent data and obviously that's why they can...
Smart thinking, Mark.
We try once in a while.
You should be engineering.
So, since they had background data on it...
Just on it might be, you know, might be the, the best way to go, so.
I know there was something there.
Other, other questions with that? So, we'll move forward with this and, you know, this is that, kind of that next, next component, if you will, as part of the building blocks here for the overall mixed-use districts, so. Okay, very good, Mark. Thank you for that. Thank you for ferreting that out with all of the traffic engineers and, and coming back with, with this, so, very good. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda. We have no other either actions or information items. And that being the case, the September 14th, 2016 town board work session is, is adjourned at 7:45 PM. Thank you to staff, thank you to Lisa and WCTV.